Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Trustees to order July 14th, 2014 at 7:42 PM. Could we have the roll please?
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullum.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford. Trustee Levinson. Trustee Rosner is absent. Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner is absent. Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean present. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in the Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
Thank you. We have one resolution to go into executive session tonight.
Resolution authorizing an executive session at the July 14th, 2014 meeting of the Board of Trustees.
The matters to be discussed in executive session are as follows. One is Church Street redevelopment, excuse me, which is a contract negotiation attorney-client privilege. Other is a conditional designation agreement, which is contract negotiations and attorney-client privilege, and non-contractual salaries, which is a personnel matter. Do you have a motion?
I move.
Move by trustee Cullum, seconded by trustee Levinson. All in favor? Any opposed abstentions? Thank you. We'll be back at eight. Or earlier. I'm an optimist. Got a little bit of that toothpick.
Exactly.
Hello. May I see? I think I'm not there. Yeah. I don't know where he is. He's moving. Oh, he's a terrible person. He doesn't... Oh, my goodness. He's losing his mind. He's gotta wake up. Well, you know? And I don't want to go on this. I think I'm going to work, I guess, though. He's a list. Oh, no, I don't want to work, I guess, though. Oh, maybe he's fine. And he's probably going to go home. He needs to go to the hospital. I want to be happy today. I want to get a lot of energy. I want to do a little water.
Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order. Could we have the roll please?
Phil, it's President Torpe.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Collum.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner's absent. Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner's absent. Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean present.
Please rise to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, just quickly, a reminder, what we had done in the past for our summer meetings was hold both the meetings in July and no meetings in August. And what we're doing this year instead is holding one meeting in July and one meeting in August. So what normally would have been a July 28th meeting is no longer being held. So our next meeting will be August 11th and should contain also our regular or special meeting and our conference meeting as well. So just make sure to mark your calendars for August 11th. Just a reminder about the free concerts in the park. So this is every Wednesday. And I think the next one, the Weisenheimers. And that is this Wednesday. And so head down to Flood's Hill, bring a blanket, bring some chairs and hang out. It is a great opportunity to relax and hear some good music. All the concerts start at 7:30 PM. You do not have to buy any tickets ahead of time. And the rain date is right here in SOPAC. The Free Concerts in the Park series made possible in part by funding from the BCB Community Bank and Maple Crest Ford Lincoln. If you need any or you would like any more information about that, you can visit sopacnow.org. Very excited to be able to announce the 5th Annual National Night Out. So this is Tuesday, August 5th on Flood's Hill. The event starts at 6:30 and will feature live music. And basically, if you haven't heard or been to National Night Out before, it is basically a public safety fair. So our police department will be there, fire department, rescue squad, Seton Hall, our community emergency response team, Neighborhood Watch, and a host of other organizations that provide various public safety services so people could learn more or get involved. And there's going to be plenty of really fun activities for the kids as well, like coloring stations, free giveaways, and a, my favorite, the bouncy house. And at 8:30 PM, we will start showing the Lego Movie. So if you'd like to come down, hang out for a couple hours, and then watch a movie in the park, it's usually a beautiful night. Hopefully, we'll have good weather. Trustee Collum has guaranteed that.
We haven't been rained out ever in five years.
Well, that... That may change now. But we certainly encourage you to come out and hang out. It's a great chance to meet a lot of the people who do an amazing job to keep all of us safe. Paper shredding days. Saturday, July 19th and Saturday, October 18th, from 8:00 AM to noon at Public Works, 300 Wall and Ave. If you need to, the vendor that is there will provide a certificate of destruction to verify that the shredding took place. And you can go down and do that, just make sure to bring some ID with you. The next container days, they are the following. They're from 8:00 AM to 1:45 PM or 1:30 PM on the following Saturdays, July 26th, August 23rd, September 27th. Those are down at DPW also, and those are for, also for residents only. Another reminder about SO Connect. If you have not downloaded the app and you are watching this, please do so. Go to the iTunes Store, go to the Google Play Store, download the app. It allows you to submit service requests directly to the village. You can also, it's also a way, if you have a general question, complaint, inquiry, or compliment, we're happy to take those too. You can send it in through that app, and the information gets routed directly to the department that's responsible for taking care of it. It is the quickest way to get your issue put in the work queue for our departments and our staff. And you can also, you can use it from your mobile phone. You can also go to our website at southorange.org/311, and you can do so there. And just a reminder, that's for non-emergency issues. Downtown after sundown. Every Friday and Saturday night, you can head down to our downtown, whether you choose Spio to Park or the Plaza in front of the diner, or both. There is some great concerts lined up for the rest of the summer, some really good local bands. The music starts at 7:30 PM. This is going to run through Labor Day. So we're really excited about it. It's been some great music so far. It's a great chance to walk around town, grab some dinner, grab some ice cream, and listen to some really great music. So 7:30 every Friday and every Saturday downtown. And if you want more information about that, you can contact the Village Center Alliance at sovillagecenter.org. And one more reminder that the farmer's market is open. Every Wednesday from 2:00 to 7:00 PM, you can find some great selection of local foods and produce from some New Jersey farms. And I think there is even a New Jersey winery there now as well. And that is in the parking lot off of Sloan Street and First Street. Again, every Wednesday from 2:00 to 7:00 PM, and those will run through October. Next up is our approval of minutes. And we have minutes for the June 9th special meeting, June 16th special meeting, and June 23rd regular meeting. Do I have a motion? Moved by Trustee Levinson, seconded by Trustee Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. So tonight, we are happy to have a presentation from RCC Consultants. Don Vaughn is here, and he's going to talk a little bit about the process, an incredibly thorough and comprehensive process that originated from our Public Safety Committee in trying to find the best ways to understand and move forward with upgrading our technology for our public safety departments. And so we've got a wealth of information to hear a little bit more about tonight. So thank you for being here.
Thank you for inviting me. Thank you everyone of our trustees, and thank you for the audience. RCC was hired to take a look at the public safety radio systems that are existing in the township of South Orange. Very quickly, the company itself, RCC Consultants, is over 30 years old, which in the consulting business is rather a long time. We've been headquartered in Woodbridge, New Jersey all that time, and have worked not only nationwide but worldwide in a number of other areas. Primarily, though, we work on public safety radio systems. The project approach we took... Say here. There we go. And that's the agenda that I'm going to be talking about, the description, report of the findings, recommendations, and then questions and answer period. The project approach we took was first looking at your existing FCC licenses. We interviewed all of the agencies, DPW, police, fire, rescue, everyone we could talk to, as well as outside agencies like Seton Hall and REMS, which is the Regional Emergency Medical Control System. And we took a look at all of your equipment, hands-on approach. When we, and then we also spoke to the maintenance vendors, the people that actually fix your radios, to talk about them. The idea was to determine what was going on. What were your technical issues, what were your operational issues? And it was for every department. We wanted to take a look at the viability of the systems that you had in place, whether or not they were going to be able to be resilient, how you backed up your systems, and how they worked in town. We took a look at what we thought and discussed with people would be the future communications needs of the village. And then we created a report, which we have submitted now. Now, this is a report on the report, if you will. So, got to put this down the right way. Okay. We took, we took an approach of saying, what can we do? What can be done with what's here? What can, what should be done with the systems as they are? We can either patch them, put on small patchwork fixes, if you will. We can upgrade the existing VHF radio systems that you have to meet the required performance standards and the new ER, newer, since the time you installed this, national standards for public safety. We look at replacing the existing systems, some of them, all of them, with a new type of radio. APCO, which is the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials, has a standard called P-25. P-25 has been out now since 1988, 89. But there are new phases, and the state of New Jersey has used federal grant money to create a Phase II, APCO P-25 Phase II system, which is much more frequency efficient, and is going to be, is covering statewide at this point. And then we looked at moving to that system, which is called NJICS, and their state-of-the-art P-25 Phase II system. The people that are going on to that system now include New Jersey Transit Police, which your police department works with all the time. Newark Fire is on that system now. Belleville is on that system now. Maplewood is talking about going on. Union County is planning on going on to it. There are a number of major entities in this area that are going on to that new system. And I'll talk about the benefits of that in just a minute. Okay, I apologize for the color contrast. It isn't as great as it looked to be on my monitor. But when we went through the, and did the investigations, this is sort of a report of the findings. First, you look at infrastructure. You look at the base stations, you look at the radios, the antennas, the fixed equipment, what we call infrastructure. Yours are just about 20 years old at this point. I don't know about many of you, but I don't have a 20-year-old car. And this is something that you're depending upon daily to protect everyone in the village. So 20 years is a long time to be working with the system. It is functional. As I note, it is functional. It is working. There are problems, but it functions. The equipment is no longer manufactured. And the manufacturer has published an end of life, which is no longer will they support it. No more parts, no fixing, no nothing. And that date is 2016 for the infrastructure. Right now, even though they've, they've stopped manufacturing the equipment, they are supplying parts, they are supplying fixes for the radio, but it's on a best effort level. They're not going to extend themselves to do anything. The console equipment that you are using in police headquarters now, this is for the police side, has a button-in LED, button-in LED console manufactured by a company called Z-tron. Very good product, functioning just as it did when you first bought it. It works, it works fine. There's no real reason to play with it. However, it cannot be upgraded to the newer technologies which involve IP telephony. That's all digital now, right? This is circuit switched. And in the old days, that's what we called it. It was like an old telephone. You dial it, you set up a line, you have a line held until you release the line, and that's circuit switching. Everything new now is IP-based. Everybody wants a computer. Okay. Again, facilities, police department facilities, there's marginal space for new equipment in the basement of the police headquarters. We measured out the floor the other day with Motorola. It seems that there will be enough room for any new equipment that we might want to put in. But it's barely there. Okay. The satellite receivers, and those are at Baird and Seton Hall, are fine. There's no real problems with any of those spaces. However, all of the sites need to be upgraded to public safety standards for grounding and lightning protection. There's a public safety standard called R-56, and that's, our recommendation is to upgrade to that. And there are radio, repeater radio coverage problems. There are dead spots in town. We've experienced them. We've been out on the street with patrol officers, primarily portables, okay, some mobile radios. Some mobile radios seem to work through just about everywhere, but portable radios, especially inside newer buildings like this, concrete steel structure, it's problematic whether or not you can actually get coverage. And that's because the way a repeater works is the portable radio talks to the radio, the repeater repeats that out. There are issues trying to get up to the site and then back down to the site, from the site. So, not unheard of in this day and age, and not unheard of in many communities in New Jersey. Okay, mobile radio, it's called subscriber equipment now, mobile radios and portable radios. The mobile radios for the police department are a mix of almost 20-year-old radios. Well, I'm sorry. They're a mix of radios, some of which are 20 years old, others are newer. The newest are the XTL model radios that are in patrol cars, functional with no major complaints about the mobile radios in VHF. The portable radios are problematic. Again, you have a mix of radios, some are 20 years old, some are fairly newer than that. Again, the XTS Motorola radios that you have are the ones that are functional at best. But they are, we're running into a problem, or we will be running into a problem, of getting spare parts for these. Some of the radios that you have, as a model, it's called the HT-1000, and some of them are, the only parts that are available are from eBay. So literally, you're going to eBay to get your radios fixed. Anyway. Sort of difficult picture to see from the audience, I guess, but that's a diagram of how your police department is set up, with repeaters, with satellite receivers which listen for radio signals, and then select the best signal to go back out to the repeater. And you have a spare base station, which is the same model as the primary base station repeater at Crest Drive at the police headquarters. However, and it's a backup, so if there's a failure of Crest Drive, you can still have a radio repeater working in town. However, it doesn't connect to the voting system, so therefore, it's marginal coverage at best. Now, fire. Having, oh, I'm sorry, you want to go? The fire department has exactly the same equipment that the police does. They are, however, not, I'm sorry, they have the same type of equipment as the police does. They're not having a problem with their coverage at this point, and primarily, after some discussions with Chief Shoemaker and the people in the fire department, it's primarily because they operate differently than the police do. The police are on the street, trying to talk to each other, coordinate activities between themselves, and they talk to dispatch for wants and warrants, vehicle checks, et cetera. The fire department, once it's dispatched, really doesn't talk to dispatch very much, and spends most of its time in a fire-ground situation where they're going portable radio to portable radio, not trying to get up to the repeater, come back down. They also have spots in town where they have coverage problems. However, they've developed workarounds to them, and Chief Shoemaker is very pleased with the way his people have got it working at this point. Their console, while it's not a Z-tron, it's a Motorola, is also the button-in-led technology from the 1980s. Okay, facilities. The fire department headquarters, the radio room for that is really marginally sufficient for the equipment that they have in there now, and there's not a whole lot of room left up there. We'll have to look at, if we have to add more radios to their system at some point, we're going to have to look at where we can shift equipment in that building. And again, extensive grounding and lightning protection is required. One of the problems we're going to have, well, one of the issues we'll have to deal with, with the fire department is, of course, it's a historic building. So we can't just stick antennas all over the top of the building without having all sorts of historic issues, so we don't want to do that. And again, radio coverage is reported as sufficient for the needs of the department at this time. And that's fine. Again, the subscriber equipment, a mix of almost 20-year-old radios, all the way up to pretty current stuff, functional with no major complaints. And the portable radios in the same position. The one issue that they do run into in fire is the fact that they run into mutual aid, and now they've got to carry a UHF radio and a portable radio that's VHF. Maplewood Fire is UHF, other departments are UHF. So they end up carrying two different radios in order to talk when they get out of town, when people come into town to help out. And this is the line diagram of the fire department radio system. It's very similar to the police department with satellite receivers. The one different satellite receiver is that theirs is at fire headquarters, where police is in police headquarters. And that's where their spare base station is, their backup base station. Okay, rescue squad. The rescue squad seems to, well, they have, we have issues with the, with the rescue The base station, again, is the same model series as police department and fire. Best effort of support and end-of-life is 2016, just like police and fire. They're dispatched currently by Union County, reporting marginal quality, mainly issues with radio tie lines and intermittent problems with that. The squad reports that they perceive a lack of priority of their business from Union County. They feel that they're, sort of put, not put aside, that's the wrong term, but the major priority is not them or your rescue squad, it's everybody in Union County first, and then, oh, by the way, we'll take care of South Orange later. Primarily tie line issues with the telephones, and we've been working with Howard and getting Verizon sort of put into line. Those lines, those telephone lines seem to have, problems seem to have been corrected at this point. Of course, that just waits for another storm to come through, and then we go back to the problem again. But anyway, that's where they are. During our investigations, we found a faulty antenna system up on Crest Drive. Probably one of the reasons that they have such poor coverage on their system, and why they have such poor paging coverage, see, they page out the alert monitor receivers to get squad members to respond to calls. Those need a good antenna system, and working with Mr. Lewis and Howard, we're working to order a new antenna for them and get that repaired. And again, their radio actually is grounded, but it needs lightning protection on the antennas. So as part of a Crest Drive remodel, if you will, we have to do the work on that grounding system. Okay, mobile radios, again, it's a mix of units, some are no longer manufactured, and they are all, though, functional at this point. Portable radios, same story. And the alert monitor receivers are problematic at this point. We've got to come up with a final inventory of which ones can be, it's called narrowbanding. The FCC, in its infinite wisdom, decided to change the way the frequencies were arranged. They thought it would take about five years. People are still rebanding 15 years after the FCC mandated this be done. So the receivers need to be reprogrammed and reworked. And again, that's the layout of the rescue squad radio system. The conclusions we came up to, again, this is part of the task, we had to come up with where, where we thought things could go. The first concept, not really the first, but the one that we came up with is moving the police department and the rescue squad to the NJICS system. It's a state-of-the-art system with multi-jurisdictional coverage, essentially the entire northern half of New Jersey is covered very well at this point. There's no infrastructure cost to do this. All we would be involved with is buying mobiles and portable radios and control stations to talk into the system, and then the fees that the state charges. That is, however, excuse me, one drawback, the state sets the rates. It's about $45 per year per radio, which is not unreasonable, based on what I've seen nationwide, some states, for their multi-state, I'm sorry, for their multi-jurisdictional systems, charge up to $150 per year. It permits you to phase out the existing equipment as it ages and degrades. What is it? I once heard it referred to as graceful degradation. I don't know whether that's a good term or not, but... And it provides instant interoperability with New Jersey Transit Police, which will help out the police in town, the Newark Fire Department, New Jersey State Police, and the Essex County Sheriff's people. Talking to the chief, you don't necessarily run into Belleville very often, but Belleville will be there on the system also. Again, it offers state-of-the-art options. The system is outfitted for GPS, so you could literally have a GPS tracker on each one of these radios. Unit ID and emergency, every time you key it, the ID of the radio pops up. If there's a problem, you can push one button, and everyone is alerted to the unit, and it has the emergency tied with, tied with GPS, you could do it, and know where he is too, but you don't have to do that. In-system messaging, just as you do text messaging now on your phones, you can do that with the police radios, or, I'm sorry, the NJICS radios. And as encryption standard, so you can have an encrypted radio system at no extra cost. And the, let's see, the scanner world out there, there are people who will spend inordinate amounts of money just to listen to police and fire radio systems. It's very difficult with this type of system for them to spend enough money to crack it. It's because of the technology that's used, the frequency band that's used. Not to say that it can't be done, hasn't been done, but you're talking thousands of dollars rather than the old scanners you used to pick up for a couple hundred dollars. This is, this is a lot safer, lots more, more of a system than we talked about before. And we looked at it as the lowest-cost alternative to replacing everything that you have at this point, because that would be the, one of the alternative. And conclusion is that we leave the fire department with the current system. They don't want to move, they're not, they're happy with what they have, it's fine. The suggestion is to give them radios so they can talk to the police if they wish to, but they wouldn't be on the system, so to speak. We would give them a dual-band radio so that they could have a 700 megahertz, that's the band that the ICS is on, system, as well as a VHF in the same radio. That would be the suggestion. Now, moving PD means we have to reconfigure the console, furniture, and electronics to accept the additional control station radios. This is now police. Purchasing a new single-band mobile radios, I don't think it's worthwhile spending the extra money to have dual-band mobiles for the police department. The mobiles will be 700, the portables will be VHF and 700, so everything will work out, they can talk to each other. And the dual-band portables will allow them to work with fire, DPW. Maplewood Police at this time is VHF also, so we'll be able to make it work for them. Maintaining the VHF licenses and capabilities at dispatch just makes sense. The VHF licenses are very hard to get, and very rare at this point, so. The other, one other thing that we discussed in our meetings with Seton Hall was a way to get their new Seton Hall radio security system into the police department. Right now, if there's a problem at Seton Hall, they have to pick up the telephone and dial in to police dispatch on the seven-digit number. So, well, actually, it's 10 digits now. It's best at this point to talk about putting a radio, an MOU with them that allows you to piggyback on their license, and the control station allows you to crosspatch and talk into them. They can talk to you, you can talk to them, all your units can talk to each other. That's, that's a very simple, normal process, and the Z-tron console will more than adequately handle that. Fire department, I mean, they've stated repeatedly they're comfortable with the VHS system they're using. I would suggest that we purchase a couple of control stations on the system, the new system, and allow the fire department at their dispatch headquarters to talk to everybody that they want to. And the next suggestion gets a bit of a problematic, but their system is going to go away in five to 10 years. And it would be a good idea, a prudent approach, to start to budget for the replacement of that system in five to 10 years. That's all. Rescue squad. Replace the dispatch at Union County with REMS. That's at Martinlin Hospital. It's an Essex County dispatch facility. They're working with all of the Essex County fire and rescue squads now. And the way we would do that is to lease a line from Verizon, from REMS to Crest Drive, which will allow you to page out the squad. Upgrade or replace the Minotaur four and five alert monitor receivers, and then purchase, in this case, we talked to the captain, he wants to use portable radios. Leave the radios in the squad vehicles, mobile radios in the squad vehicles, and just use portable radios. And that's fine. So we ate of them. All right. And again, it's now two control stations for the rescue squad and for REMS. REMS needs the radio so they can talk to the squad also. Overall, now, one of the things that no consultant likes to do is swear that everything's going to be great without testing. And what we'd like to do is suggest that we conduct some field strength tests to verify the quality and the strength of the signal from the New Jersey State System here in the village. No sense buying a pig and a poke. It seems to work fine. Anecdotal evidence, meaning I have gotten, made arrangements for, and the chief has had, chief of police, has had two radios for the past month running around the village. He's handed them out to patrol vehicles and cars. The one place in the village where it doesn't work, police headquarters. Yeah. You can't talk out of police headquarters with either your VHF or your 700 meg radios. I don't know why, and that's bothering me. So I'd really like to do a test with signal strength meters and indicators, and find out exactly what's going on, why that is. I've been told, again, anecdotally, that that building was built as an air raid shelter back when it was originally constructed, and it was sort of a bomb shelter. I've been told, again anecdotally, that that building was built as an air raid shelter back when it was originally constructed, and it was sort of a bomb shelter, okay? And construction may be a lot more robust than we have in normal facilities nowadays. I don't know that. But they seem to think that it was built to withstand radiation, and of course, radio is a form of radiation. So, anyway, so that would, if they verify, if the field trials verify what we've found, running around and talking to people, having cars talk to each other, move ahead to finalize a contract with the state. And then finalize the contract to move dispatch to REMS. Obviously, we have to replace the rescue squad antenna. And then, one of the things that I'm suggesting is we sit down with the REMS people, because they have equipment that has to interface with whatever we end up doing. So, we need to talk to them about what it is they're going to need from us, whether it's one radio or two radios, or if the phone line connection, how it's going to be connected. All of that has to be determined. Next steps. Whoop, there we go. Verify, confirm the police console specifications for the manufacturer. We've had meetings with the manufacturer of the furniture, and I need to talk to, we need to talk to the maintenance shop that handles the ZTRON consoles now also. There is a request form to join NJICS. We have to verify the equipment quantities and the number of trunked talk groups. It's like a frequency, it's a virtual frequency. So, you'd have a detective talk group, you would have a police patrol talk group, and you can even divide it even more than that. But each one of them is something that the state has to deal with. Negotiating with Seton Hall to access their system, it's important for dispatch. And then, sign the agreement with REMS. I didn't forget about DPW and parking, but basically, the suggestion is that once we move police off of their VHF system, that we donate the equipment, the best of the equipment, to the DPW, install it, reprogram it, install it in their cars and trucks, and portable radios. And then the parking authority pretty much gets the replacements that aren't used by the DPW. Okay. Budgetary costs. Now, this is, this is the latest numbers that I got off of Motorola today. They were, once again, a little bit late coming to the party, but we talked about the number of radios, the number of talk groups, the number of consolates, and how we are going to handle alarms and IDs and the installation numbers. And right now, first-level quotation, which has to be verified, as you can see the number. Now, that's, right now, we're planning, I think we're looking into, the possibility of a lease with Motorola. And these numbers would, could change, but not radically at this point.
Don, for the folks at home who are viewing, it's a little tough to see this on their TV. Can you just read what the number is?
The total number on this is six-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. And that's pulled off of the Motorola quotation.
Excuse me, Don. Barry, can we have this?
Yeah, and I was going to say, we will have the PowerPoint up on the website tomorrow, for anyone watching at home.
Don, this is a one-time capital cost, or is there associated maintenance?
This is a one-time capital cost. The maintenance dollars are not included in this, but there are three-year, three-year maintenance programs already built into these numbers for all of the equipment.
And what percentage of the overall, what has the maintenance worth?
The maintenance looks pretty good. It's actually about three-hundred dollars per unit total for three years, so...
A hundred dollars a year per unit?
Basically. And it varies. The portables are a little different than the mobiles, and the base stations are less than that, so, you know, it's... The numbers look reasonable, okay?
What's the expected life?
Ten to fifteen years. Portable's less, fixed equipment and mobile radios more. Again, the way the police department has assigned the radios to each individual officer tends to preserve the radio, the portable radios. Radio, departments that use a rotating shift basis of, you know, you have two shifts' worth of radios, and the guys come in and pull them out. The tendency is not to treat them as protectively as they might. And over the years, we've found that it actually pays to assign a portable radio to each officer. You lose it in the long run in maintenance and costs to fix them, so...
Just one point, to clarify, it's the mobile equipment that's really the cost. The other components of it, like the transmission, is part of the state. The state is the one who's maintaining, not like what we have today where we have our own transmission equipment.
Right. All of the fixed network equipment, all of the radios that these radios will be talking to and repeating are owned by the state. The interconnection between the state radios, base stations, and the brains of the system, all handled by the state. There's no cost to you for that. Again, there's a forty-five dollar per radio per year, which is very reasonable.
But interruptibility depends on everybody else using the same thing. So, are we sort of late to the game that most others had adopted this?
No. Actually, you are in a good spot. You're not the earliest adopter, which, you know, definition of a pioneer, a guy faced down in the dirt with an arrow in his back. So, you're not the pioneers, but you're in early enough that you can get a good seat at the table, so yes. And I think it'll work out well. What happened in, what happens in many states, Michigan being one of them, is eventually, this type of system supersedes all of the other radio systems, all the other public safety radio systems. In Michigan, a project I was just working on, there are sixty-seven thousand police and fire radios on their statewide system. Now, that included every major city in Michigan, so it's going to happen. It's only cost-effective to do this, and eventually, it'll take over.
Have you, has there been research in terms of prevention from being jammed, or if anybody's trying to?
This, yes. They have, in fact, this system is built by Motorola at this point, just to let you know. Motorola has an entire security team that spends all of its time looking at ways to break in and make these things not work. They try to do it over the air, they try to do it by landline interception. The industry's been pretty impressed at this point with the levels of security of these type of radio systems. Jamming, brute force jamming, yeah, if somebody comes up with a transmitter wideband and there's noise all over the place, yeah, you can do that. It's very difficult with this because it's a digital radio, and once you get the bits into your receiver, it works very well.
How about climatic if there's, you know, magnetic storms or?
Well, no, that's going to, well, that's going to be problematic if there was a major solar flare type thing. These systems are pretty robust, though, and they're built to take a lot of abuse. Also, in terms of climate, two years ago, I did a test of this type of system. Part of the team that did the test, we tested ten thousand grids, tenth-mile grids, in the city of Houston. And it was the same P-25 Phase II radio system, outstanding clarity. Temperature varied from basically a hundred-and-eighteen to a hundred-and-twenty degrees, down to, oh, a low of about ninety-five. We did it all summer, and it worked pretty well, worked very well.
I think one of the other points that needs to be made, and one of the reasons that we picked RCC, is that you do have a grant writer on staff. And the next steps in looking at the economics is to have the grant writer see if we can acquire some grants or participate in some grants as part of the process. And the other is, is that we're looking at the lease alternative or the rental alternative, because if we do get a grant, if we already paid for it, it wouldn't apply. So, we could then, whatever's left on that lease, we apply on a purchase basis.
Yeah, the grants are, I'm sorry, the leases that Motorola offers on their equipment are very flexible. They allow you to pay them down early, so there's no penalty in those terms.
I have a few questions around the fire department staying with the system they have. You had mentioned that they have to carry two radios. Will they still have to carry two radios, or will they be interoperable between the police and the fire department?
It depends on how many radios. Right now, we've only got a couple of radios slotted for them. And we have fixed equipment, which would allow them to be patched. So, police department and fire department could be patched together, and it would be as if it was the same radio. So, they'd be speaking on VHF, and the police would be listening on the seven-hundred-megahertz system. They will probably continue to carry two radios, because there are UHF, another band, okay, fire departments, Maplewood being one of them right now, until, unless they switch over to seven-hundred, which they're talking to people about now. It's a matter of convenience for them, and if they want to keep doing it, they can. If they don't want to do it, they don't have to at this point.
But our police department and our fire department will be interoperable. They'll be able to speak to each other?
Absolutely. Absolutely. They'll be able to speak to each other on a unit-to-unit basis. Or officer to, you know, official to official, if you want to do it that way too, because we can restrict it.
You had also mentioned that we should begin budgeting for five to ten years for the fire department to switch over to a similar system. Any idea how much that would be for our fire department?
I didn't, once the chief was pretty adamant about not jumping into this, I didn't really spend a lot of time detailing their inventory. I really couldn't tell you at this point without just wild guess, but we can easily do that, once we get on.
Is there a ratio to head count or something like that that we could?
Again, it depends on where they go. If they just want to keep on the VHF system, it could be a fairly inexpensive rollover of equipment. But then again, going to seven-hundred, if they want to become more complex, if they want to get into some of the things that seven-hundred megahertz wideband, which is the new public safety goal, they're going to be coming out very shortly with complete biometric scanning suits. So that a fireman going into a building could be monitored for heartbeat, respiration, body temperature, everything. And that's only available at seven-hundred. It's not going to be done at VHF, because you just can't talk that fast on VHF. But there are mechanisms being developed now that would allow you to monitor the health of any, anybody over the radio. So, again, it depends how far, how fast, you know, if you...
Hey, Don, I'm sorry, I think I probably started the line of questioning, and you still had one slide left. I just kind of wanted to focus on what that number was, because to upgrade, that's a total roughly six-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. And the next slide, I think, is equally as important as what is the alternative of just improving the existing, what we have?
Right. When we started to look at this and we looked at how much it was, I decided that I needed to look at what it would take to improve, upgrade, provide you with a new state-of-the-art VHF radio system, just so you have a counterpoint to say, we could do this, we could do that. So, that was the next slide. And this is really tiny, okay? But, just so everybody knows, the total number on essentially becoming a P-25, Public Safety 25, radio system on VHF, this would not be the New Jersey interoperable communication system, this is just your own VHF P-25 system, is going to be a million-two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. Again, it's a budgetary estimate. I can't narrow it down much more than that right now, but a million-two is a good estimate of how much it would take to replace all of the, literally, it would mean replacing all of the equipment that you have. And base stations, antennas, everything.
Is there, has there been a dollar value assigned to the equipment that would be handed down? So that we understand that it's not just one-point-two, but if we were to also upgrade the equipment for DPW and Parking Authority, which it sounds like is probably worth doing also, you know, what are we saving with the hand-me-downs? And obviously, that's not going to be a majority of that cost, but it'd be interesting to know that as well.
Well, if you were going to outfit the DPW and Parking Authority with portables and radios, the portable radios are about six thousand dollars each, and the mobiles are about seven thousand dollars each installed.
But those are the...
Yeah, those are the... Those are on seven-hundred.
Yeah, I mean, the equipment that we would be handing down, so the existing equipment, what would it cost to bring, if we were to purchase new, to bring it up to that same level?
Okay.
Because that's something that, from a budgetary standpoint, that we should take into account.
Okay. I did not break it down that way.
Right, right. No, I'm not suggesting it for this, just one in particular, but just overall, right. Right. If there's twenty radios getting handed down, what's the cost savings there?
If you wanted to, if you wanted to replace the DPW radios with new VHF radios and P-25, I guess, those are, again, about five thousand dollars each installed. Portables are probably about three.
Could we get a little?
Yes, and I can do that for you, but I...
That'd be great, thank you.
On my feet right now.
No, no, no problem. No, no, I don't mean to put you on the spot like that, but that would be, that would be very worthwhile to know if that was incorporated into some of these cost estimates.
Sure. And, so, anyway, that's the kind of number that we're playing with. Not unreasonable. Some of the towns, some towns around here have spent a lot more money than that. But we're trying to hold down the costs and do the best job we can for you in this. There's going to be some refinement of numbers. These aren't going to be final, and until we can really do that, that's where we are.
Don, two questions. One, does the six-thirty-nine thousand include the new antenna that needs to be replaced anyhow?
Uh, no.
So, that would be incremental?
Yeah.
That's basically done.
No, that's basically done.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe that had been already priced, so I didn't put it in here.
Before we get into kind of wrapping up and some follow-ups, and if there's anybody that has any other questions, we can entertain those as well. I do want to kind of make two points. One, which is thank you for this presentation. And I will say we've, I mentioned this to you right before the meeting, because we got a chance to review some of the report ahead of time. And we've brought consultants in before, when I think we've all been a little dissatisfied with the comprehensiveness of the work product. So, thank you for putting something together that was informative and well-organized, and, you know, there's a lot of information here. And for those of us that sat down at the very, very, very beginning of these conversations, this is a real complex web of systems that we have operating here. And it's not easy to understand, and we probably could not have done so on our own had we tried to push forward with that. So, the value of this is definitely very high, and I'd also want to make sure to especially thank trustee column in the Public Safety Committee and trustee Levinson from Finance, but especially Public Safety for taking a real, you know, leadership position with this and seeing this through the... real, you know, leadership position with this and seeing this through, this is something that's really important. And we have a lot of information now and some really good steps about what to do. And that's exactly the kind of, you know, great work that should be coming out of our committees. So thank you guys for really spending so much time on this. It may be a little unclear to people watching how much work went into putting this together and how complicated this system actually is, none of which is our fault for being it's people who were here before who didn't necessarily plan for the future. And, you know, you're familiar with the history of, you know, public safety technologies. People were, you know, a little bit more doing their own thing, whereas now, you know, and especially since, you know, over the past, you know, 13, 14 years, people are very concerned about interoperability. And so bringing, especially in New Jersey, where we're very interested in doing our own thing in each town, and not only in each town, but each department in each town, you know, moving towards something like what's been talked about here is a really big step. So a lot of work went in to put this together and I think we've got a really good foundation to move forward.
You know, understand, you know, this is something, and it's, this is something that only happens probably once in your career for this town. I have to do this...
First time in my career.
Well, no, and there's no reason why you should be a specialist in that I get to do this every couple of months. So, you know, it's, it's something you get familiar with. And hopefully, we've gotten it to the point where everyone understands where we're going. And that's really the point of this. Not that you have to know exactly what specific, specifics of the technology are, but that you have an idea that we know where we're going and hopefully, everybody's going to be happy with the end of it.
Well, I think everybody's on board with that this is a problem that needs to be, that needs to be identified and needs to be solved, and that hasn't always been the case either. So everybody being on board with that common goal is also important.
Yes.
Yeah, and if I could, I'd just like to weigh in and also join and thank Don and RCC. You know, one of the things I think that immediately struck us in evaluating the proposals in our pre-proposals meetings with them and then throughout this whole process was the level of experience, professionalism. I think, Don, if I'm correct, you're pushing 40 years in the radio industry.
Yes, sir.
Jim Demoro is right up there with you. Ray Quinones and down the line.
Ray's a young kid. He's only been there about 30.
Yeah. He's only got 30 years. Just incredibly professional. I also like to recognize certainly Trusty Levinson, Trusty Column, who was, were in on the committee and this involved a number of meetings, but also recognize Chief Shalell, Captain Kroll, Chief Shoemaker, Dan Cohen from the Rescue Squad Captain, and really all of the departments. I think every report we got back from RCC was they got incredible cooperation.
Yes.
They got valuable input from the officers. I think really across all departments, everybody took it as seriously as this subject matter demands. And I think we got a really outstanding work product from RCC and I thank them. We will later on, I think, discuss the next steps in the process. We actually have a resolution on the agenda. Those of you who recall when we did the RFP, we broke it down in a couple of different phases. And the first was to do the assessment. And then the second and third would be to assist us in identifying and going through the purchasing process. And then the final step would be to implement. So we will have later on the agenda a recommendation to move forward with phases two and three.
And the next phase will be as good as this one, right?
Absolutely.
And certainly I...
Of course, it's grant writing.
The committee, I think, fully endorses, and I certainly, Trusty Levin's, Trusty Column, I'm sure will echo that in their remarks, but fully endorses moving forward.
Trusty Column, did...
Yeah, a few things, and it's probably good, I know we have a resolution, but it's good now while we have done. I'll echo, try echo, whatever you want to call it. I think you and your team are just rock stars. I'm so pleased with this report.
Thank you very much.
I think it's exactly what we were looking for. I think for the public's benefit, again, it took me like a weekend of like Google to just understand what all these, okay, maybe like a month of Google to figure out what all this means. But I think to put it into perspective for the public is that a lot of our public safety departments were having troubles with their radio equipment, talking back to dispatch, talking with each other. It was a series of administrative requests to particularly our Police Department where there was these areas that were considered dead zones. And as a result, we collectively as a Board of Trustees realized that we didn't have the, kind of the expertise in-house. And this was a good way to go out and bring in experts and really try and solve this problem once and for all, which is why the RFP was broken up into four phases, is that the first one, which Don just reported on, was like the needs assessment. What is really this problem? Is it, is it that, you know, there's user errors or is it really our infrastructure? Is it our radios? And, you know, it was a competitive RFP. We heard from, I think, eight total different respondents and RCC was the one that was selected. So what you've seen is Phase One. What we're going to be asking the Board to do on behalf of the Public Safety Committee, Finance and IT Committee, and all the folks that Mr. Lewis referenced, is being, to ask for Phase Two and Phase Three, essentially collapsing both of those contracts into one. One of the things that we considered early on before knowing that we'd be interested in equipment on the state contract was putting together a bid package and designing and implementing what the next steps would be, knowing now that, as Don referenced, that these are things that are available under the state system, under state contract. What we want to do was take those hours referenced in Phase Two and Phase Three and really aggressively go after grants, knowing now what we're looking at, over $600,000 in our capital budget, it's better than 1.2 million, I think we can agree. But the next phase, we really want to go with their in-house grant writer who now has the knowledge of our community, what our needs are, and work collaboratively with us, hopefully Seton Hall University, and put together something we can aggressively go after on the state and federal level to try and bring financial resources for us to implement this. So generally, on most part, I don't like to have a presentation then ask the Board to vote, but I'm very confident, knowing all the folks that have been involved up until this stage and not having a meeting until August, we would like to move aggressively, getting to the next phase of this project and not have a delay. So if you have any questions for myself or Trusty Levinson, obviously Mr. Lewis and Don is here, I would urge the Board, if you feel appropriate, that we move forward with the next steps as soon as possible.
Yeah, I was, as well, the compliments to the job well done.
Thank you.
I was going to as well report out that we should go forward with the recommendation of going to the Phase Two and Three, as well as what we will see in resolutions in a few minutes, the first steps of actually taking on some of the Rescue Squad implementation of using the new technology and switching our dispatch vendor. This acknowledges it and moving forward with getting them onto the new system.
And for the public's benefit, Phase Two was roughly about $10,000. Phase Three, roughly 12,000, or I'm sorry, 1,200. So all in, we would be authorizing a contract for the next two phases of like 11/5. And then we have one, one fourth phase, which was the actual implementation, which would be the final. So that wouldn't be awarded until we have a better grasp on what type of financial resources we have. Did we get any grants or are we going to make a decision from our capital budget that the village will be expending these funds?
And the other part of it is, it's a large phased-in implementation as well.
And so you work in parallel? You keep the old system? Is it sort of during the transition?
Oh, yes.
How long is that staging?
Well, we don't know yet.
We won't know that for a while. Just to give you an idea, manufacturer of the furniture, okay, for Police Headquarters is going to take between 60 and 90 days, maybe a little bit more. The equipment, the radio equipment upon order takes about 170 days. So, you know, that'll give you the idea. Then there, there has to be some coordination between different vendors, how things get interconnected. As I like to say, the gazintas have to go with the gazaudas and everything has to work together. I'd offer, you know, if there's any other questions or anything, any comments, or if you want to open it up to anyone in the audience, I'd be more than happy to.
Any other questions? So are our follow-ups primarily the action items that are on the agenda for this evening?
Yes.
Could be the next step.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks a bunch, Don.
Again, thank you for your time and the work that everyone in the town has done with me, with us. Let me see here, I'm trying, blank, there you go. Again, the Police Department has been supremely cooperative. Fire Department has been a help. Rescue Squad have worked with them. It's been a, it's been a joy to work with everybody here.
That's great feedback. Thank you.
Don, I'm sorry, there was one last thing that I wanted to make sure the Board knew, is that you actually took the equipment, the proposed equipment, and you went to all the sites that were documented from our first responders to actually test them to see how they do. And you found close to 100 percent, close, as close as you can get, in the areas where right now where we're getting drops.
Yeah, I was really pleasantly surprised. I didn't think it was going to be as good as it was. And having 40 years in the business, it takes a lot to surprise, Don. But yeah, it works very well.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I would like to open the meeting up to public comments. I don't know if we have a sign and shoot or not, but if there's anybody who wishes to speak, it's not a ton of people here, so if you'd like to, if there's anybody who wishes to speak, just please come up to the microphone, it's right in the middle of the front row here. If you could just state your name and address and please try to keep the comments to three minutes apiece. Thank you.
Natalie Clow, from Union, New Jersey. I just have two questions. One, does anybody have the necropsy report on the animal at Jersey Animal Coalition, Lickety Split, that died over two weeks ago? And secondly, is the attorney that is handling the municipal case the same attorney who will be handling the recently filed lawsuit in the Superior Court of Newark? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Yeah, we follow up at the end of the comment section, then we'll follow up with all the comments that were brought up. Seeing as there are no other...
Good evening. Mayor Torby, trustees. I have two questions tonight. What is the status of the Rescue Squad building in the township of South Orange? And can you, number two, can you explain the pay-to-play ordinance to the villages of South Orange?
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. Gail Petrecca, Union Township. Two words, emergent relief. I would like to know, is this going to go on until August? The shelter is now adopting animals out, which is a good thing, but this was kind of a move that took everybody by surprise last week. We were surprised to see the shelter back open. And I understand this is going to go on until August. If I'm wrong, can somebody correct me on that? Or is there something, a move going to be made to change this situation? This was quite a surprise for people who've been following this, to have this happen last week. And when Mr. Strauss went in, according to the news reports, we were kind of surprised by some of the things he was getting away with saying. And when the judge granted the emergent relief, it was what happened. So I think this is going to go on until August, another five or six weeks is, are you, is the town going to do anything to make a move to change the situation or is it just going to ride it out until August? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, I'd like to close public comments. Why don't we address the JAC questions first? So one was a question about an animal that recently died.
Right.
The other is a question about which attorney is handling the cases and then a timeline kind of in the next steps.
Correct. In terms of specifically the necropsy report, we've not received one. We only recently learned of the reported death of the animal. We're certainly concerned. We'll be looking into that and we'll get any available information, whether we have to do it through the court system or not, or whether they will voluntarily produce information. On the issue of which attorney, our municipal prosecutor, Graciya Montillas, will continue to handle the pending municipal court summonses and the enforcement actions in municipal court legally under New Jersey Supreme Court ethics opinions, the same attorney cannot serve as the municipal prosecutor and at the same time the municipal general counsel. So he could not represent us in that anyway. Because of a conflict based on a past representation that Mr. Rother has, we did recently appoint special counsel, a firm from Morristown. We'll be working very closely with them to address the issues in Superior Court and the action that was filed last week. In terms of the timing of it, and just so everyone is clear, both here and anyone watching, the emergent relief that was granted was granted without notice to the village, without any input from the village to the Superior Court. We will have and will be meeting in the next two days to finalize our response, which among other things will include a more immediate request, as we are allowed to do under the rule, to dissolve some of the initial rulings and temporary restraints that were granted without notice. We are confident, I have reviewed all the moving papers, I'm extremely familiar with the factual history, can categorically state that there are a number of inaccurate statements in the moving papers, outright falsehoods in the moving papers, glaring omissions, very selective coloring of the facts. And unfortunately, the judge is only presented with one side when he hears it on a basis like that. We're confident that ultimately, when all the facts are known, the judge will, you know, will take the appropriate steps in the interest of the animals first and foremost, and we'll see where it goes. So as far as a timeline, I do anticipate certainly something much sooner than the later August date, which has sort of been rescheduled for the full-blown thing, but certainly a much more immediate determination, which may or may not be on the papers or may involve a hearing in front of the judge, ideally as early as next week, to dissolve some of those preliminary things that, quite frankly, he granted, I think, based upon his reliance on what we are confident we will demonstrate are not factually accurate moving papers. So hopefully that answers the questions.
Thank you. The next question was about the Rescue Squad building. The specifics of that would have to be directed to the Rescue Squad because we're not managing the project, although there are a couple of things on the agenda tonight that I'm going to have to recuse myself from, that maybe Mr. Lewis...
Yeah, just as a general update, because obviously, we're in the loop because among other things now with them running the project and it being in their name, they will be coming before the planning board, so that's largely how I'm sort of in the loop on where they're at. I've had conversations with the attorney that'll be representing them as well as with the architect, have seen some of the conceptual drawings. I know they're making quite a bit of progress on that. We expect them to be before the planning board in August. At a minimum for completeness, potentially to start and ideally conclude a public hearing on the application. Depending on the agenda of the planning board, there is consideration being given to a special meeting perhaps in August. It's a relatively straightforward application, pretty straightforward building. The ordinance that's on for second reading makes it a permitted use. So ideally, we think from, you know, a land use and a planning, they will have their approvals in the next month or two. I think that will coincide with their schedule, their planned development, they're getting the bids and their contractors. And ideally, we'll see them under construction in the not-too-distant future and certainly would hope that they will get closed in before the winter and then, you know, need be, finish the interior work. So it's, I think, moving along on a good schedule and we'll certainly do everything we can to help.
Thank you. And do you or Mr. Rother want to briefly speak to our anti-pay-to-play ordinance? This is a general question about, about the ordinance?
It's, it's a more stringent ordinance than the state statute amongst other things. It prohibits contracting with anyone who's made a political contribution.
Right. Generally, the, these ordinances, and there are state statutes, and then some towns like South Orange have gone above and beyond those, that the idea, right, is to basically prevent someone from donating money to... someone from donating money to someone, and then that person then getting extra business to whoever that person who donated that money was. So ours is particularly strict, much more so than the state statute. I don't know if there's anything either of you want to add about that.
If anybody's interested, if you go to southorange.org and to the section with our ordinances, it was passed in 2008, it's ordinance number 31, and it's four pages or so, so you could read the entire ordinance there.
Ordinance 31?
Yes.
And you don't have the ordinance memorized?
In 2008.
To read right now.
Well, yeah.
Well...
We have it in our...
Do you want a copy of it?
It was given to us in our legal meeting that we had earlier today.
Great, okay. Why don't we move on to ordinances for second reading?
Ordinance 2014-14, second reading of public hearing of an ordinance to amend the Central Business District redevelopment plan to provide for certain additional principal permitted uses.
Okay, I'm going to step out at this point. If you could just make sure to note that, and feel free to come again if you're not.
We'll let you know.
Thank you.
Howard, you're it.
Okay, so Mark's not here. Yep. Do you want to have, I guess, this is for second reading, and will you open it up for public comment?
Correct.
Anybody have any comments about this particular ordinance?
Public hearing on ordinance 2014-14, opening the public hearing.
Well, seeing none, open for discussion from the board, or entertain a motion.
For the benefit, can we just give, like, two sentences on what this is?
Yeah, well, I think it was read out loud, but this is basically to, when we structured the transaction with the Rescue Squad, essentially building it on the lot next to the firehouse, it was determined that technically, under the Central Business District redevelopment plan, there was, this was not a permitted use. So the only effect of this is to amend that plan to specifically allow the Rescue Squad as a permitted use on that property, so as to avoid a use variance application before the Board of Adjustment.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis, is this similar to the last time we did? An ordinance to the CBD will now be transmitted to the planning board?
This was already sent at their last man. I don't know that they did anything with it because it was pretty straightforward.
Okay, so we can act on this, and we have the support of the planning board, and then we'll be good to go?
Yep.
I move the ordinance.
Second.
This will call both?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner's absent, trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Who's not? Want to call him back?
The ordinance for...
No. You didn't call him back.
Come on.
Ordinance for first reading?
2014-15, introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the township of South Orange Village, Section 152-36, Schedule 4, with respect to parking on Rinda Road.
I'll never know.
Can we have an explanation? Any additional explanation on that?
This was for the benefit of the board, since trustee Rosner is not here. He actually addressed the issue of parking on Rinda Road, and then we had heard from the neighborhood that they would like to see the parking restrictions extended to the entire length of the street, and there was no objections at the time, so this is a continuation from the ordinance that we passed two meetings ago.
Are there any other questions, or have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Levinson, seconded by trustee Davis Ford. Do we have the roll, please?
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner's absent, trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2014-15 be scheduled for second reading, and the public hearing and a public hearing be held on August, the 11th, 2014, board meeting, and a public hearing be held for the referred ordinance. The village clerk is authorized to take the necessary actions to publish a notice for such hearing.
Moved by trustee Davis Ford?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cullen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Let's move on to our consent agenda.
Resolution 2014-199, resolution hiring seasonal staff. Resolution 200, resolution adopting purchasing policy. Resolution 201, resolution requesting hire, gruel, and associates to undertake certain projects in the village in its capacity as village planner. Resolution 202, resolution awarding a contract to A. Tecton Concrete Corporation for the 2014 Sidewalk and Curb Program. Resolution 203, resolution of the township of South Orange Village in the County of Essex, New Jersey, authorizing the planning board to investigate whether the properties, commonly known as Block 2013, Lot 3, on the tax map of the township of South Orange Village, should each be designated as an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 48:12A-1 et cetera. Resolution 204, resolution authorizing the placement of lean on private property for a special cleanup of private property at 346 Academy Street in the amount of $2,128.88. Resolution 205, resolution of the township of South Orange Village designating Vose Avenue Apartments Urban Renewal LLC as a conditional redeVELOper for the Vose Avenue redevelopment area, and authorizing the village president to execute a conditional developers agreement with respect thereto. Resolution 206, resolution adopting the cash management plan of the township of South Orange Village for the year 2014. Resolution 207, resolution accepting proposal of SHI International Corp. and awarding a contract under New Jersey State Contract Number 77560 for GIS mapping software of South Orange Water Utility Infrastructure in an amount not to exceed $19,800. Resolution 208, resolution to adjust the pay rate for a per diem dispatcher in South Orange Village Police Department. Resolution 209, resolution in support of New Jersey Senate Bill Number 91, an act requiring labeling of food that contains genetically-modified material and supplementing Title 24 of the revised statutes. Resolution 210, resolution revising, resolution 2014-167, authorizing change funds. Resolution 211, resolution waiving planning board fees for South Orange Rescue Squad application. Resolution 212, resolution approving lease for interim parking area for South Orange Rescue Squad. Resolution 213, resolution authorizing RCC consultants to conduct Phase 2 and 3 of public safety radio study proposal. Resolution 214, resolution approving additional services of HMR Architects Village Hall renovation architect in the amount of $44,340. Resolution 215, resolution approving additional services by Hatchmont-McDonald for the contract administration and inspection of the asbestos abatement of Village Hall. Resolution 216, resolution authorizing the village president to execute an inter-local shared agreement by and between the township of South Orange Village and University Hospital, emergency medical services in the amount not to exceed $12,000. I'd just like to correct that, it's not an interlocal agreement, so scratch that, it's just an agreement between South Orange and the University Hospital. Resolution 217, resolution accepting proposal of HMR Architects for the architectural services for Police Communications Room.
Thank you. And if we could remove 211 and 212, both of Rescue Squad resolutions, and just do that separately, so that I can recuse myself from those as well, that'd be great.
Oh, and then, I did want to, there was one additional one that I did email out today, and it related to, and this would be, Resolution 2014-218, resolution conditionally authorizing payment of final payment to Tricon Enterprises, Inc. And as I explained in my email, this is because of our not having a meeting again till August, and the requirements of New Jersey prompt payment law, we would not have a meeting in time to approve the final payment to Tricon. So this is a conditional approval, that it's approved subject to the asbestos consulting engineer and the construction manager, both certifying that all the paperwork and lean releases. And to be clear, this is not any additional funding, this is just the final funding under the existing approved contract as modified by the change orders previously approved.
Okay.
Additionally, questions? We, 2014-203, if you recall, our last meeting was a time that we passed a series of resolutions asking the planning board to investigate certain parcels on Irvington Avenue. This one specifically was removed, it's Block 2013, Lot 3. That, if you can think about the area, it's the Family Buffet, and that currently is before the planning board, they were just given approvals. So prior to the last meeting, after that was communicated to us from trustee Rosner, we felt we wanted to leave that out of the proposed study area. So I don't know if it's appropriate, and Mr. Rother, perhaps you can chime in, would it be best to just strike this?
Yeah, I think the intent was to permanently withdraw it, not to pull it and hold it and carry it, so.
Good to...
Not to return again.
Is it necessary to vote on it, to just strike it down, or is it necessary, do we just remove it?
No, it was never acted on to begin with.
Okay.
Withdraw it.
Great.
Okay, so 203 is not going to be included either. Trustee Levinson, you look like you got something to say.
Yeah, there are a couple of them. One is that on 205, can you give a further explanation of that resolution?
Sure, and that is the, for anyone listening, resolution designating Vose Avenue Apartments Urban Renewal as a conditional redeVELOper for the Vose Avenue redevelopment area. And this is, that is an entity that has been created, but is the owner of a considerable amount of the contiguous property immediately to the west of the village-owned parking lot behind, and that is accessed off Taylor Place. The property owner owns a considerable amount of, and has approached us about a potential redevelopment to potentially include the village's parking lot. This would conditionally designate them, provide for them to then make an escrow deposit to cover the village's expenses with redevelopment council to explore their proposal, potentially, and ultimately to negotiate, and potentially, which could lead to an actual redevelopment agreement and a project. Again, we were approached by this property owner, we had not initially contemplated, nor gone out to offer or solicit any input on the Taylor Place parking lot, you know, to the extent of others. Here, now that that may be potentially in the mix or available, they're certainly entitled to approach us as well with potential ideas they may have. We have had just, you know, a preliminary meeting with this property owner, you know, and think it has potential to become a real good additional asset, another positive development in town. The preliminary review, it could add some much-needed parking and be a good positive ratable. So that's what, the effect of that resolution is.
Thank you. On 207, I think the amount is in error versus the detail of resolution.
Yeah, that's correct, and just for the title, I think when that was originally put on, there was based on a proposal that included...
Correct.
A fee that we don't need anymore, so that, whereas the agenda reflects $19,800, do you have, what's the actual number, 17?
17, but the resolution is...
I think it was 17.5.
Yeah.
Right, so the actual amount is 17.5.
The resolution is correct?
The resolution's correct, the agenda was subsequent to it being put on the agenda. We reviewed with the vendor, realized there was a component that we did not need, and then I neglected to send a follow-up to the clerk to correct it on the agenda.
And just a comment on 213, as a continuation of what we were talking about before, on the RCC consultants going into Phase 2 and 3. And there is an execution, on 216, is now moving the Rescue Squad dispatch from Union County to REMS, which is in the University Hospital in Newark, and then to have communication between them and the Rescue Squad. And in fact, this is a reduction in cost to us as well.
So you know, how much?
About $1,500 a year.
Oh, that's significant.
Well, you know, every little bit counts, but more importantly, it's going to be, I think, better service, more reliable, it's the proximity, the new technology.
And it's the same dispatcher as Maplewood.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Other questions, comments on the consent agenda?
We need to make one adjustment. I'm sorry to the clerk's office for not sending this sooner, I think I sent it at the last meeting, but it hasn't been fixed. In the actual resolution, 2014-205, this is regarding Vose, in Section 1, I know it's probably boilerplate language, but it needs to reflect Vose Ave redevelopment area, rather than Valley and Third Street redevelopment area.
Okay. So our consent agenda now contains 218 and does not contain 203, 211, and 212. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Moved by trustee Davis Ford?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Levinson?
Schnall. Schnall.
Levin, Schnall.
That's right. Could we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner's absent, trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so now you guys have 211, 212.
I move 211 and 212.
Second.
Do we need a voice vote?
Yeah, I could do a roll call. Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner's absent, trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pass.
Come on back.
You missed a big discussion.
Okey-dokey. At this time, I would like to open the meeting up to public comments, if there's anybody who wishes to speak at this time. Okay, seeing as there's no members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close public comments, and unless there's any new business, I'd like to adjourn this special meeting. Can I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by trustee Davis Ford, seconded by trustee Levinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right. What's that?
Is it we're all done?
Yeah, that's right. And now, I would like to call to order our next meeting, our conference agenda meeting of the Board of Trustees. Could we please have the roll?
Village President Torpey?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Cullen?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Levinson?
Present.
Trustee Rosner's absent, trustee Schnall?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Lerner's absent, Mr. Rother?
Here.
Susan Caljean, present. Adequate notice of this meeting has provided, has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:46. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the village website, and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may not be taken. Susan Caljean, village clerk.
Thank you. I'm going to give the quickest village president's report of all time, which is that there's some different IT projects that are, I think, going to be brought up at later points in the meeting. One thing that we've been working on a little bit in administration is project management, task management, organization, Gantt charting, all that really exciting stuff, and just finding better ways to organize, manage the tremendous amount of tasks that come in on a daily basis, trying to find systems to better prioritize things that are very high priority versus things that we can put into a queue. We have a lot of things going on, on a regular basis, and finding some ways to organize that a little bit, I think it's going to make a really big difference as far as getting information to the board, as far as helping department heads and administration kind of stay organized. Definitely a good step. You know, I personally am a hate email, and it is too often used as, like, the only way to do things, like electronically, and there are plenty of systems, some of which we've tried before, and we're going to lay out a little bit of a process going forward to basically create some workflows to manage all of that work a little bit better and track it. And so I'm kind of excited, it's sad that I'm excited for that, but I think it is exciting. So I'll just leave it at that. Mr. Lewis?
I'll try and be brief as well. Real quickly, on Village Hall, the, both the renovation and the RFP, the renovation, as noted, the asbestos abatement is now completed. I did have an opportunity to go in there and view the inside that is completely gutted, and it really is pretty fascinating. Would certainly extend the offer to the trustees, either in group or individually, if anyone would like to see it. I think we're going to try and...
I would.
Get some pretty comprehensive photographs, and maybe even a walkthrough video. It's pretty interesting to see. As far as the RFP for the potential adaptive reuse, we have that now up on our website. We have an ad out seeking a marketing consultant to assist... We have an ad out seeking a marketing consultant to assist in trying to get it placed elsewhere. Identified a handful of websites that seem to specialize in marketing historic properties that we're coordinating to get it placed there at a relatively nominal cost. I don't think there's, I think three of them, they're all under $100, so I think that we'll move forward with that while we try and find the consultant. And then, so that's moving along as well. Second point that I specifically listed is a conversation that just came up, and it relates to our sign ordinance and our temporary sign ordinance, our current ordinance permits certain temporary signs that are, A, limited in size, I want to say to 24 square feet, and limited to duration of 30 days. And I think generally, 24 square feet normally would be 20, is it 24 square inches? Yeah, I was going to say, wait a minute, that sounds way too big.
That's a huge.
It's a much smaller, and it is, I think largely was focused on, you know, existing storefronts and relatively small. Where the issue came up recently was with the new gateway development. And as with a lot of larger developments like that, they like to put larger signs up on the side of the building announcing that they're opening rentals and whatever. It was done, and there's actually ironically still a sign on the avenue, which I was not aware of, but it's still there. I don't know, and I've not had an opportunity to research the history to see if that was done as part of the planning board process, which I suppose if somebody had the foresight, they could do it there. But the question was whether there's a sense that those type, and because certainly I would imagine Third and Valley won't be far behind, with their interest in having some, you know, signage advertising that they're going to be opening and that they have units for rent, whether there would be an interest in the Board, and I think referring this likely to planning and zoning, to start a discussion and evaluate whether some different criteria should be developed for projects of that magnitude.
Is it the size or the time?
I think it's both. I mean, certainly the size, you know, up in a building when it's as big as-
Well, the other side of it is that you can put up a banner.
Well, that, the banner is a temporary sign. I mean, that's what it falls under, and the current regulations don't. It's pretty limited for, again, a building of that size if you're going to be up top. But, you know, I mean, this is, there is no concrete proposal, it just came up, so unless there's an objection, you know, I think what I'd ask is planning and zoning to take the lead on that. Lastly, and it's just sort of a minor point of order, but it has come up, it was something that I noticed when I got here, subsequently talked with Mr. Rother, and this relates to the practice of the clerk reading every word of every resolution on the agenda. As much as I love Sue's voice, it is, I think what really brought it to the forefront was last meeting when we had about four pages of resolutions. Wasn't sure she was going to make it, but I'm not sure. I think it's sort of a historic tradition in the village. I think it is a practice that may have sort of been outpaced by the times. We now have the agendas on the website, we have every resolution on the website. There's copies of the agendas here, so anyone in the audience can read exactly what she's reading. It is, to my knowledge, and I'll certainly defer to Mr. Rother as well, there's no legal requirement to do it. In my three prior municipalities that I worked at, we did not do it. Didn't seem to be an issue, but it's just something I float, because I don't think Sue would ask for it, because she's not a complainer, but I'll come to her defense and suggest that we might, unless somebody has a reason.
It's not required.
No.
And often, it's, you know, at the meetings that I run, the president says the clerk will read it into the record at a later time, and that's it. So if it's a resolution of real significance, maybe those are read, and then the majorities are lumped together and said will be read into the record at a later time.
So it's just food for thought. If anyone feels strongly about it, you know, I'm not looking for a direction right now, but we can talk and maybe legal and personnel, and anybody just weigh in with their thoughts, but Sue would probably appreciate it.
Well, why don't we just go through the process, discuss it in legal and personnel, and come out with a recommendation, and then it'll be addressed and done.
Sounds good. And that's it for me.
Great. Mr. Rother?
Yeah, just briefly, with regard to the East Orange Water situation, we are meeting tomorrow with DEP, Mr. Lewis and Trustees Clark and Levison and our firm to discuss, and New Jersey American, to discuss a proposal to purchase water, commodities purchase agreement with New Jersey American, and to discuss with them our approach to that, and to secure their advice, consent, and to answer any questions that they may have, so that as we move further along the way, all parties are in agreement as to how this should be done.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Trustee Levison?
Yep. Just a couple items. One of significance, and Trustee Cullum, I guess we'll address it as well, and that's the implementation of our CAD RMS system. We're fully converted over with some minor adjustments of some old history, but we're fully operational with a new computer-aided dispatch and records management system, which includes a new 911 system that interfaces with that product. Our next steps are to now integrate that with the fire department, so we have a resolution that will, or a change that will be made coming up very shortly, that links the two systems together so that we have a common dispatch software between the two state, public safety organizations. The other items that we have, we're narrowing our field down in looking at software, which will be used to support our daily operation within the village, one being a new implementation of Laserfish options. It significantly will enhance, includes workflows and our ability to have a depository of our documents online. It includes a web interface, a much better web interface than we currently have, including another product called Property Pilot, which is really focused on the tax assessor, but as well will give us online displays, and it will give us the capability of creating specific forms and design that can be used to input or make requests within the village. It additionally, on the longer term, could replace one of our building department components called Mitchell Humphrey, which is the permitting process. And lastly, we're looking at another product called Novus, which is an integration with Laserfish, which allows us to do agenda management, which is what we're going through right now in the agenda that we currently have. It gives us a better ability to control it and interact with it. And lastly, which Trustee Schnall will talk to, which is part of the PIMC initiative, and that's Peak Democracy. If you want to do it now or-
Sure. I'm happy to. So this is a software and a service tool that is basically a virtual town hall. It's around increasing civic engagement. The distinction is that users have to register and be authenticated to have a valid street address in South Orange. I believe there is a opportunity for certain types of survey and communications and forums to extend that beyond South Orange. But once again, the people who participate do need to register and be authenticated users. The concept here is it's a great opportunity for this Board and, you know, at our direction to be able to poll, survey, discuss, inform, and, you know, ultimately, it's about civic engagement. And it's not something we've been able to do before. It's an electronic tool. It will be tied into the website. You'll be able to access it directly from the website. It will go live ideally the same time that the website, when it's ready to go live as well. And I think it's going to really help us understand as we consider various different issues around development, just about anything. It gives us a great opportunity to interact and hear from our residents about their opinions on various ideas. So I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes, we met earlier today, and one of the items that we discussed was a look at, in a very narrow aspect, disaster preparedness program. And the areas we looked at is the plan for the building that our village employees are in at 76, that the need to have a plan if something happens where there is an emergency in the building, there's no plan in place that has been communicated to the employees of what to do when they exit the building. Is there a location where they all should gather, somewhere in the parking lot, to make sure that it is safe to go back in? And how is everyone accounted for to make sure that everyone is safe? So I want to give that probably action to our emergency manager officer, which happens to be you, Mr. President, to work with the administration to come up with a plan in case there's some sort of safety issue at the building. The other area is our backup data, just in regards to talking about the clerk's office. And again, she would work with you and to discuss to make sure that any data that is critical to the running of the village or from via the clerk's office, what is the backup in place? And then that should be a process that is codified so that we all understand. It may exist as part of the plan that you have, it may not, I'm not sure. And then finally, in this area, there needs to be a business continuity plan on behalf of the legislative body. Let's say this space or 76, or if we happen to go back to Village Hall, is compromised and we cannot use that facility or some disaster happens. How do we make sure that there's no interruption in the functioning of the legislative body and the support of the village? So that can be a, there was a term used, a go-bag. For example, in my role as clerk to the Freeholdance Board, our plan is that we have a go-bag with the code of the, in this particular situation, of the village and all the other basic things that one would need, maybe your gavel. Then a plan, well, if we have a limited space, who on a day-to-day basis are necessary to be at a backup location? That means that all the village employees probably couldn't be at that alternate location. What is that location? So it would be the clerk, it would be the village president, it would be the administrator, and any other key people essential for, you know, the support. And the other employees, of course, would not be able to be accommodated, we assume, because it would be a smaller place. On the county level, our location, backup location, is the hospital center. So these are just basic things, you know, that we really need to have in place as a process to make sure that we have business continuity in place.
Yeah, we should make sure to coordinate. I know, I don't know if Mr. Lerner was there today, but all of that's written out in our EOP, so we have like a line of succession, all the different decision-making.
Okay.
I mean, all the way down the chain, if people are not able to make decisions about things. So we should make sure to share with you guys that information that's already been put together, so that there's, you know, it's a, it's not, you know, too siloed efforts.
And I realize, and that's why I, you know, referred this action back to you, because in your role as an emergency officer, and I know that you have a real big document, but I don't know if we had, you know, these particular aspects, you know, identified.
And maybe that's a good way to do it, is if there are aspects of that that you are interested in, we can pull those out and talk about them.
Okay.
And make sure that those are covered, and if there's anything additional that we don't have in the document, then we can make sure to add that.
That's all I'm looking for.
Okay, cool.
We talked about the status of recodification, and I'm going to ask our counselor to weigh in on a summary, a quick summary of that.
Well, there are just a few items remaining right now that need to be addressed. Amongst them, the sewer and some direct payment for violations. There's about three such items that we're cleaning up on, and just as soon as we have those in place, that will be completed.
Okay. And we talked about earlier in the meeting the play-to-play status, which was on our agenda at our meeting earlier. Is there any additional information you want to share, communicate, more than what was discussed earlier in our prior meeting regarding the modification or changes to the existing play to play?
I think at some point, the, a draft which was circulated to the committee, and when the committee has an opportunity to read it and comment on it, that draft will be discussed again at the Legal and Personnel Committee, and if agreeable amendments are made, forwarded to this body for consideration.
Barry, would you like to weigh in why you think that this is-
Yeah, and well, I-
Important, the changes?
Right. Without attempting to report and list everything, it is, in my experience in the time here, that laudable as the goals of the ordinance are, and there are certainly, I think, components of it that can and will stay in place, there are other, I think, unforeseen and unexpected, unintended consequences that have kind of come to light that in some ways are not necessarily, don't lend themselves to the most efficient operations, including, you know, RFP-ing for things, the dollar amount of which doesn't warrant the amount of time and effort put into the RFP process. Some situations that have arisen where you're in a situation of a continuation of a process that you've had a particular professional, an architect, an engineer, and I think there was an attempted fix to address that in certain cases through some of the amendments, but I think some of the problems still exist. So what, in conjunction with the draft that Mr. Rother is circulating, I have agreed to compile and come up with a report identifying some of the specific examples, some of the specific, you know, problems that have been encountered, and where we think that some tweaking of the ordinance and some overhauling of other aspects of the ordinance can, I think, continue to meet the goals, the overriding goal of avoiding having people make contributions and turn out and get work, in which case, and I think certainly some of those aspects can remain and certainly are much stronger than the state, which, quite frankly, the way the process is set, you can make contributions and still get contracts without being a fully lowest bidder. So I will be compiling that report, circulating to the Board, and I'm sure we will have a good discussion at the Legal and Personnel Committee, reading that sort of in conjunction with the proposed draft, and then hopefully a recommendation will come out of the committee to the full Board.
And we also discussed the quality of life issues, and which would involve, there's some, I guess, synergy or cross polit, cross responsibilities in this area involving the police department and the code enforcement. And so it was, after some discussion, it was decided that we really need to have this more fully vetted in two committees, the Public Safety Committee and the Code-
Public Works.
The Department of Public Works Committee. And so we're going to ask both the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, Trustee Cullum, and the Chair of the Public Works Committee, Trustee Clark, thank you. I wanted to call you Walter, to put these, to put this item on your agenda and then give us some recommendations. Okay? And there are some other items, and the only other one that I really wanted to quickly touch on, and I'm not going to go into much detail, and this has been on the agenda of the Department of Public Works, and that's the Ludding Brook status. And what this really is dealing with is some flooding issues and erosion issues that involves South Orange, West Orange, and the county, and who's responsible for some sort of solution to mitigate these flooding problems. And there's going to be a walk-through this area tomorrow, and I assume that this is on the Department of Public Works' agenda on Thursday. And that's all for me tonight.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Rosner is not here. Is there anyone that can give the planning and zoning committee update?
Is there anyone that can give the Planning and Zoning Committee update?
The committee meeting was postponed until Trustee Rosner gets a little bit better, so it is not scheduled to meet on the 16th, and we have not identified another date yet.
Thank you. Trustee Cullen?
I'm going to keep it under 10 minutes.
That is no way.
Start timing me. I heard that, is that a stopwatch?
I heard the watch.
The, Trustee Levison already did the CAD RMS update, thank you for doing that. False alarm enforcement, we talked about this the other day with our consultant for the CAD RMS implementation. We have an ordinance on the books that actually fines people after X number of false alarms, and they haven't actually been, that ordinance has not been enforced in a really long time. I would say namely because we haven't had the technology to make it easy for the department to track these things. If you recall, the ICMA report from maybe about two and a half, three years ago, this was one of our number-one calls for service. So in discussion with Trustee Levison, myself, and the Police Department, and our administrator, we wanted to actually start enforcing this, and we would like to up the fines a little bit as well. They kind of reflect $25 for your third false alarm, seems relatively low. So the Board of Trustees can expect an ordinance revision coming between the Public Safety Committee and the Finance and IT Committee at the next meeting. The pedestrian safety initiative, next steps and budget considerations, my big favorite initiative from the Police Department. I can't thank them enough for the great job that they've done. Our totals are well above 300 in terms of summonses that have been issued for failure to stop, and 300 associated others that were kind of tied to the cops and crosswalks campaign. And one of the things that we were doing in the Public Safety Committee was trying to figure out ways to continue this. In the past, it was done, it was done by a grant, and then some of that level of enforcement fell off, and I think our concern is seeing any drop-off from where we've been, at least to this point in the summer, may make people revert back to bad habits. So we worked with the Police Department and also with our court administrator to kind of understand the finances of it, how many tickets were issued. Outside of the grant, can this operation essentially fund itself? Do we cover costs? A lot of people would say, oh, this is just a revenue generator for the town, when in reality, we don't see all of that money. A lot of it's split between the state, also going to the Department of Transportation for education, for supporting grants like this, and then the municipality does see a certain portion of it. And then if somebody challenges it, and then the summons is downgraded to something, we would see even less a percentage. But overall, based on the numbers that we saw over the summer, and the income, I don't want to say necessarily income, but we can continue this operation, and it is self-funding. And then on top of that, any additional surplus goes to, can help support the pedestrian pedestals, the, you know, stop for pedestrians, it helps with the public education. And so at least where we are in the Public Safety Committee, and the recommendation of the Police Department and the Traffic Bureau, is a continuation of this throughout the summer. See how things are going, continue to check in with the police chief, see if it remains successful, and go from there.
How do you measure success?
This one's a really tough one. A lot of it is following the pulse of whether people feel a little bit safer. I can say that when I'm driving downtown now, it seems like people are stopping more frequently. Because we didn't take a measure prior to the campaign of just kind of clocking several different crosswalks to see how bad it was, I think we know from the public and the community that it was pretty bad. And so really, we're relying on residents' responses, whether they feel that people are stopping more frequently. I've been speaking with a teacher who wants to do something education-wise with her third graders, to explain to them that they have to take responsibility to, pass it along to their parents. So right now, I don't think there's actually a firm indicator of, you know, it's working, it's not working, but I do believe the more enforcement that we have on this given topic will yield the type of results of people knowing that if they don't follow the law, they are getting a summons.
I can see that, probably having compliance with people who live in town, but we also are a corridor where people pass through and stop, so you're going to have people who are really, you know, not informed about this, and so.
I think in the long term, our goal is to build a reputation as the type of community that enforces its laws, and very aggressively, whether it's stop for pedestrians and crosswalks, whether it's speeding, I think slowly but surely, and this is kind of where the quality of life issues came up with, Trustee Levison, is that we're working with the department, they've been fantastic to work with, is how do we build that level of understanding, not just in our community but outside of our town, that when you come in, you're going to follow our laws, you're going to make it safe for all users of the roadways, et cetera. But at least from his perspective, that being our police chief, he's found this to be a pretty successful campaign to date.
I have a couple of suggestions to build upon, I think is a great idea, but to build upon, I think, more compliance is the education component, because there was a time where people understood what jaywalking is, or whatever. I believe a lot of people are totally ignorant of that, and, you know, people are so used to walking or crossing wherever, that we, I would encourage you to look at the education component at the grammar school and high school level.
Sure.
And find other opportunities, maybe, you know, any community or neighborhood associations to develop maybe an education component, so that when people are made aware and informed, I think you will increase the compliance, but you also will reduce any, how can I say, pushback anger or whatever, because they feel that maybe that they've been unfairly targeted. And I think that, and put it in the context of quality of life and safety, as opposed to, these are our laws and you need to obey them. It causes people to, you know, maybe push back. But I think it's a great, great program.
I think, yeah, one of the great successes of the program was the awareness component of it, because I think a lot of people were frankly unaware of that particular law, and now they are. And I think frankly, the enforcement and reinforcement are very integral to that. To your point of people from out of town maybe not seeing it, I think, I have anecdotally experienced certainly a lot more courteous behavior with vehicles slowing down in town and other places around town, and I think that is an uptick. And I also think that out-of-town people frankly learn, you know? If you're driving the same route to work each day, and let's say, South Orange native stops for a pedestrian acrosswalk, the other drivers notice that, and then it becomes a culture of paying attention to that particular law. And I think that is, that is something we want to engender, and that will take some time, but we are well on the way.
Yeah, I think that the crosswalk is just one of the components of the quality of life issues. I really get a lot of complaints about speeding, and that's one of the things that we've been talking to the Police Department about, is that's just another quality of life issue and that we should be focusing on and making a, prioritize which ones that we want to go after. We have, back in the Transportation Committee, all of these suggestions about modifying our roads so that we can slow traffic down, but I think the first step is really getting out there enforcement. And if we start doing that enforcement, we should take the same type of measure that you're suggesting with the crosswalk, measure what we can do, what does it cost to put a patrol out there, and just start it to enforce those statutes.
Agreed. So we'll continue to talk about this in the Public Safety Committee and report back to the board as a whole. And I really like the, and if it's okay, if we can refer something officially to our Transportation Advisory Committee, I think that they would be great committee members to actually work on the public education. I know that they've talked about that in the past, and it seems like we will have some level of budget between, you know, continuing the enforcement efforts, hopefully reinvesting in education, et cetera. They would probably be some fantastic folks to work on this.
And we should refer to PIMC.
And the Public Information Marketing Committee. So that doesn't count as a part of my update, because a lot of other people spoke. First night, they are getting ready, they are getting ready to announce the headliners. I'm not going to steal their thunder from them, but I believe within the next couple weeks, everything will be announced, along with the title sponsors and who the headliners are going to be, and I'm really super jazzed about that. National Night Out was, excuse me, covered in the announcements. We really hope everybody comes out. It's Tuesday, August 5th, beginning at 6:30 on Flood's Hill. And you noted President Torpey, the Bounce House, but we also have the Bouncy Joust.
The Bouncy Joust?
The Bouncy Joust.
You're going to do it.
I know.
I could think of a few, oh, never mind.
And one of the things, I was speaking with the South Orange Rescue Squad, they are going to be at the event, and it's likely that they are going to be doing some level of fundraiser, or 50-50, and they're working with the clerk's office right now on getting that application. So anybody who does come, I really do urge everyone to support the South Orange Rescue Squad.
I thought you were saying that it was important that they were there because of the Bouncy Joust.
You're right.
It's all interconnected.
I suppose it's both.
It's all interconnected.
Yeah, we'll see.
I will move along to the Irvington Avenue Corridor Advisory Committee, the status of the redevelopment and rehabilitation studies. For the benefit of the board, if you do not watch the Planning Board meetings, the resolutions that we had transmitted to the Planning Board, they had some more questions that they wanted to ask from the trustee liaisons to the Planning Board about the rationale, some of the backstory, et cetera. It was kind of one of those perfect storms where, for various reasons, none of our representatives from this governing body were there to be able to answer some of the questions. So they did rightfully so table this for an additional month. And so I would probably ask President Torpey, since you're the only one here that's also on the Planning Board, is there anything additional that you need in advance from myself or members of the Irvington Avenue Committee, et cetera, that you think that we can prepare in advance for this discussion? What's a little unique, too, is I would love to go to the Planning Board meetings, but generally speaking, we already have our representatives there for me to go, and then also speak becomes a little awkward, because you are representatives to the Planning Board. So how would you like to?
Well, first, I would fully embrace the awkwardness. So don't worry about that.
We like awkward.
Second of all, there's nothing that I personally need, you know? I feel very confident in all the work that's been done. Unfortunately, myself, I believe, well, I know I wasn't there, so it's hard for me to also say who else wasn't there.
Mark.
But I don't think any of our village representatives were at the last meeting, so there could have been a little bit of a lack of, and again, I can't say this because I wasn't there, but if at least one of us are there who've, you know, had the opportunity to hear the background and all the material that's been put together for this, you know, we can certainly communicate that to the Planning Board. So, you know, the question wouldn't be for whether me or Trustee Rosner or Mr. Lerner need anything, it would really be for if ever anybody else there needs anything. So I don't know, I know we've had some weird kind of things about communication between, you know, back and forth, but is there, can we ask Jettie to send out to members of the Planning Board something, or can we ask her to send out to the members if people have questions? I mean, you know, kind of get funneled through, because I know, you know, the Planning Board was very strict about things basically being very carefully communicated. So anyway, that was a very complicated question, but is there any way we can get information, Mr. Rother, to the Planning Board, other than, like, someone coming to the meeting and presenting it?
Well, I don't know. If they have questions, the best means is to communicate the questions, so that we can respond to them.
Can we just ask Jettie to go out to the board and ask them if there's any people with questions ahead of time, to send them to her, and then she can?
Oh, ideally, that would be the way to do it.
Okay.
That's ideal, because we can also prepare, I just want to make sure we don't get to a meeting where all the questions happen there. If they give it to us in advance
That's right, that's right.
We could have a written memo, explain whatever it is that we need to explain. And I think that they also need to understand that the, just in terms of the law, the statute, it's this body that creates the maps. I don't want to call it a directive, because this should be a partnership if they have recommendations, but essentially, we create the map, we create, you know, we pass the resolutions, and then the next step is the Planning Board. Up to this point, I think it's important to have a separation. We have our advisory committees that report to the Board of Trustees, and then the Planning Board as a statutory board is very separate for us, and that, from us, and that's by design, because they are going to then move forward the next leg of this process. So hopefully, we can, at the next Planning Board meeting, be able to kind of communicate that, answer any questions. What we had referenced earlier, which was identified as Site 9 on the map, they had questions about, like, didn't we just approve something for Site 9? That's not even included in what the Board of Trustees transmitted, it was removed. There were some questions about things being, and not being a complete district for redevelopment, and that's because we specifically moved towards doing a scattered site redevelopment plan for various reasons. So why don't we, Mr. President, as to your suggestion, can we communicate something to the Planning Board, have them write all their questions down in advance? We will be happy, more than happy, to answer all of those, transmit a memo, and then bring anybody that's necessary to the following meeting to answer any follow-up questions as to the genesis of the map, where we currently were, and what the next steps of the Planning Board needs to be.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you very much. And this is where it gets really awkward, talk about awkward, here's awkward for you. So rehabilitation. If you recall, we had authorized doing a town-wide rehabilitation, and shortly after that, we had heard from one of our village employees that she was under the impression that we already have town-wide rehabilitation. So going back to the code, and it's not under the land use code, it's actually under Chapter 144, authorizing certain aspects of rehabilitation town-wide, which becomes even more awkward, because the last time the village did this was in 2007, over Valley Street, redevelopment and rehabilitation. So it seems like there's been a series of studies that we've done, whereas we've had something on our books since the 1990s, which has persisted all the way up until now. So for the time being, even though we authorized the resolution for Susan to do the town-wide rehab, until we, meaning the governing body, our staff, and legal counsel, and our village planner are on the same page about what's currently on the books, and what is it that we're authorizing for a next step, obviously, we won't submit payment or anything like that until we figure out exactly what that Chapter 144 is. I'm past my 10 minutes. We have a website for Irvington Avenue to keep everybody updated on what's going on. I was hoping to pull it up tonight, but we have a group meeting next week, so we're going to run through everything together, the resources page, and then we'll be ready to go live and share with the rest of the Board of Trustees shortly after. And response to COA third-round rules, I apologize that there isn't a draft yet, but I wanted to bring it up because these comments are due by August 1st. And as you probably read from Mr. Lewis's letter to everybody, there's a new term called the buildable limit capacity, which really, really impacts South Orange, because it seems like those numbers are off, and it directs our prospective need. So it seems like there was something that happened in the formula where it appears that they don't really understand the landscape of the village, and in the same token, I'd like to reinforce some of the things that we've done really well, and that is providing affordable housing, have a commitment to affordable housing in this town, both South Orange and Maplewood. So I'd like to reinforce some of the positive things that we've done, that we've always done well, that we've followed in our ordinances, and also point out some aspects of the formula right now that seem to be a little bit off. So we will not have a time to officially vote on that, so once a draft is done, it can be circulated to everyone on the board. If there's any additional comments, probably get them back to the village administrator, and then we can officially submit something to COA, make sure that we're on the record. That's it. Was it 10 minutes?
Well, I'd just like to add
15? 20? Okay, doesn't count.
President Torpey, I'd like to request something to be added to public safety agenda, and that was the issue that happened at Marshall Elementary School regarding the emergency lockdown button was pushed, there was an incident at the school, and it was determined that this emergency button, when something happens in a school, should be, the police department should be directly alerted. So you had a situation with students and teachers not knowing what to do, the police didn't show up to 10 minutes, 12 minutes later, and when the police arrived, they were unprepared because they weren't aware of the school's emergency procedures and protocols. So I simply would ask that
Actually, I have a response. It's been addressed, thank you for bringing that up. Shortly after, the village president had sent out alert to the Board of Trustees, the police department has been involved since the very beginning, working with the school district, working with the administration, working with our administration and our village president on compiling the after-action report, looking at the next steps. And he's been, I believe, most recently last week, they met again with administrators and the acting superintendent of the district to make sure that the issues were addressed, the perceived issues, whatever they may be, because there seems to be some misunderstanding between what does happen and what is actually happening, and that will be reported, hopefully, to the schools, to the teachers, to the appropriate people once they are complete.
All right, and this will be not just for Marshall's All right, and this will be not just for Marshall Elementary School, but for all the schools.
In partnership with the school district.
Can we have the final solution reported back during a, a council meeting here?
I, I would say no. I think in broad strokes, we can listen to what, whatever questions that you have, but I think that the actual implementation is something that the Police Department likes to keep in-house, and they don't really necessarily share those.
And just as a follow-up, I...
Oh, oh, yeah, and, and you're absolutely right. And that's not what I, I meant, in the detail of the procedure, just that, that it, it doesn't seem like it has been finalized or done.
Oh, okay.
Just to say that a comprehensive emergency plan has been put into place that covers all students in, in our school district.
Yeah, and just a brief follow-up, I did meet last week with Chief Shalow, the interim school superintendent, and the BA from the Board of Ed. And again, as Trustee Colm alluded to, the specifics of their security plans are obviously not gonna be publicly disclosed, but I can assure you that I think the Board has, has fully gone and investigated it. I, I, I think I'm at liberty to say that all of the alarms and buttons are currently connected directly to the Police Department in both South Orange and Maplewood. I think there was a fair amount of sort of confusion and misinformation as to what state, because it was relatively new implementation. But I, I would leave anything further than that to the Board of Ed, who I think will be releasing their own report.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Trustee Clark?
Yes. Onto Public Works. Apologies for not getting my notes to you in time. Let's see. Last one was over a month ago, so some of this is old news, but Mr. Lewis has already touched on Village Hall, however, as far as other capital projects working along, the pump house and bridge, we're moving forward with that. Demolition specs are expected pretty soon, and they're also doing soil samples there to make sure they can actually go ahead with all that. The Duck Pond Skate House and Walkway, the Walkway was finished a while ago, we are still waiting on the installation of lights, which is supposed to happen in July. Haven't run by there in the past couple of days, I think they're still not there. Let's see. Rawaway Flume Cleaning and Dredging, the start time for that's been pushed back, we had a low bidder who withdrew their bid, so we have to reconnoitre on that one. Earlier, Deborah Davis Ford brought up the Leddington Creek issue. We are still working on that one, trying to find out what we can do there. Ironically, we were going to meet and walk the, the creek tomorrow, but listening to the rain on the roof of the building, I think we may not be able to do that, as it will not be optimum weather for walking up a creek. Insert your own jokes there. Moving on to other reports out of committee, the Community Coalition on Race, last time I reported that they were going to have their first ever Cultural Heritage Festival, which was Saturday, June the 14th, and turned out to be pretty successful, given it was the very first one. They drew over 1,000 people, who watched Chinese lion dancers, African drummers and dancers, Hawaiian hula, participated in various activities like karate, tai chi, and origami. They are also looking forward to their next Civic Engagement Institute, which is going to begin in October, October the 20th, to be specific. That is a group of workshops geared toward people who want to know more about how to assess their skills and interests, and how to be a productive volunteer, what opportunities exist for volunteers in our community, and how organizations and governments are structured. The sessions are free, open to all residents, and the fall sessions will take place on Saturday mornings, beginning October 20th. And you can sign up by going to the Two Towns website, or by calling 973-761-6116. I'm out.
Thank you. Fossey Shaw.
All right, so, I want to highlight a couple of items from the Cultural Arts and Recreation Committee. On the cultural arts side, for the first time, we have this year, the Montclair Art Museum has an art truck, which is a portable, or a mobile truck, about, looks kind of like an ice cream truck. It's staffed by two artists who provide free art projects for children's and family, for children and families. The truck will be parked at the pool during the afternoons from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. It was here last Wednesday, and it will be, again, one more time this summer, on Wednesday, July 23rd, at the pool from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. They'll take a short break, and then for the concerts on the hill, they'll come back again during that time from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So, come on down, bring your family to participate in that. And the other one is a mural project, so the Gateway Project, the new residential development that is right along the, the train side, the, the president of the development company, Ed Ayuso, has very nicely offered some, some monies, some grant money, and creating a mural contest for that train wall. The wall has a, has 10 15-foot by 30-foot sections that artists can submit proposals to paint, and we actually, Bob Zuckerman from our Village Alliance hooked us in with art here, and they're an online site that connects art proposals to walls in need of murals, and that wall is in need. So, thanks to the SAFCA as well as Ed Ayuso for getting that out, and if anybody has any, if you want to propose, please submit your requests into SAFCA. On the recreation side of the committee, things are going fairly normal. The, the camp program is about the same in terms of population, over 200 people, 200 children have registered. There's a new program for commuters, and it's an opportunity, there's a early drop-off of 8:00 a.m. The camp actually doesn't start till 9:00, but in a way to help facilitate folks who both work at home, there's an early drop-off, and about 20 kids are taking advantage of that. The other update is each year, we take a look in our budget, what is available for upgrading playgrounds. This year, we'll be upgrading the Farrell Field Playground. That should be done this fall, and so that's, that is a good thing. Moving on to other committee work, I'm happy to say, I'm really pleased to see the collaboration between multiple organizations and committees in our village. So, for instance, this Sunday, September 21st, coming up in a couple of months, is the annual Newcomer/Allcomer Day, and so that will be at the Public Library to, that will run from about 1:00 to 2:30. But also concurrently, this year is going to be Play Day, and that's a little bit of a takeoff. In the past, you guys remember Celebrate South Orange, which we haven't done for a while, it's been a hiatus. But this year, we're gonna have a new feature called Play Day, and there'll be inflatables, there'll be actual lots of games, and opportunities for families and, and children and adults to play actually in the streets. South Orange Avenue will be closed down, as well as parts of Voe's, Village Plaza, and it's gonna be a really fun day, so come down for that. Also art, there'll be an art installation going around, so that is a big weekend. And then the Saturday right before that, which is not confirmed, but also in a collaboration between the Baird Recreation Center and the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission, is we're looking to do a baseball reenactment. So, this is in recognition that many of you know that Lou Gehrig and Babe Ruth actually played on Cameron Field. It turns out that this year is the 100th year anniversary of Cameron Field, and the thought is that we could actually put together a reenactment of old-time baseball, from the rules that were used back in the late 1800s, where they did not use gloves, and it, it should be a lot of fun.
You have to have a handlebar mustache.
Barrow mustache, yeah.
If they didn't use gloves, what did they use?
Bare hands, baby, back then.
Really?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Wow, that's intense. I'll play.
Even the catcher?
Even the, it was, it was under, it was underhand. So, the rules actually amazingly, amazingly, the rules were fairly consistent. We, we took a look at the rules, there'll be a, a team that dresses up and uses period uniforms, so the idea is gonna be, there'll be one team that actually travels around and does this, and then we're gonna try to field a, a group of adults who want to join as, in, in playing against them. And we'll play by these rules. So, it's, I think it's gonna be a lot of fun. That, well, we're looking to target, we, though we don't have it confirmed, to be the day before on Saturday, so that whole weekend could be a lot of play, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. I think that's, that's the fun committee.
One, one, if I could, one last announcement I made to make, meant to make earlier, and I omitted it, I just wanted to congratulate our Deputy Administrator, Adam Lerner, and his lovely wife, Sammy, who brought last Monday, July 7th, Dylan Winston Lerner, six pounds, 13 ounces, mom and baby are doing great, and they're at home, and I'm sure Adam's not getting any sleep, so, congratulations.
Actually, Mr. Administrator, there was one thing, I, I did want to poll, I think we had mentioned this, but I do want to poll specifically, and then we'll, we'll, Mr. Lewis will, can we put this on for resolution for next time?
Yeah, it would actually be an ordinance amendment, and then again, my, I should have mentioned that. We, I think we had a brief conversation at an earlier meeting regarding our Historic Preservation Commission ordinance, and the way it was set up with the memberships, and the skate law does authorize, I think, two of the three classes, which are specifically those with experience in the field in historic architecture, et cetera, to be non-residents when, and obviously still within the appointing authority of the, of the Board. When we adopted our ordinances, we didn't make everyone be residences, residents beyond the committee, even in those classes, there is a current situation where a, a member who has served us well, and I think has the expertise and the, and is willing, he's, he is moving out of town, but is still interested in, in serving, and I think the consensus is he's an asset to the committee. So, the question in sort of the polling of the Board is whether we'd be amenable to amending the ordinance to, to allow and track the state statute.
And in this particular case, again, depending on how we want to define it, this individual is still gonna have a business, he will actually, even though he's moving as residence, he actually will work right in South Orange, so he's got a continued interest in seeing this through. So, that, that would be the desire.
Any objections?
Everybody's on board.
Correct. All right.
Move to adjourn?
Thank you, everybody, for a great meeting. I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Moved by Trustee Colm.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Davis Ford. All in favor?
Bye.
Good night.
[applause]